So are we ready?
Yes, go.
Okay. We're to call the meeting to a quarter at 6:10. Okay, so public participation or announcements? We'll, I think, get right into the budget discussion. We have, who is on? It's Colleen, Ed, and?
That was Alina.
Oh, you. Me. Okay, I got it. I was looking for somebody remote. Okay. So with no public participation, let's move on to items for discussion, which is the 2025 budget.
All right, we will go ahead and get started.
Before you start,
Yep.
I have not been pleased, by the way, that this, not your end. This is like a moving train wreck, I think, at the state's level this year. And I have been trying to figure it out. So I have been emailing back and forth with Brad James. Start, Elizabeth started the chain, and then I have continued it. I still don't totally get it. But my hope, which I think is true, is that what we are looking at from a tax rate budget standpoint today will not be the case in, by the time we vote. And they usually change things a bit. But it looks like, and this is where I don't totally understand, it looks like, once the CLA got factored in, it looks like we're gonna raise more than we're proposing to spend at the state. And that's what I'm trying to figure out right now across the board, I mean.
Yeah. Because the average town has a CLA of 78. Like if you average all the town's CLA, the average CLA is 78.
And we're 69.
And we're 69.
So what is this?
The total tax revenue would be higher for the state, is your point?
Yeah, like, isn't this like thinking? But I didn't.
The Dunker situation, like?
Brad did, yeah, like Brad didn't answer me.
But is that relevant to the rule about the 10%? Like, is that money, like, it's not like?
That's after the 10%.
Right. So I think you still have to target 10% based on that.
Right.
For people cost, for people cost.
Yeah. Because he said, correct, in theory, not quite. So the grand list data the Tax Department provided for the December 1st letter accounted for the growth we were seeing in property value. They used the grand list values resulting from the equal addition study for every town. So it sounds like they've already accounted that. Well over half the towns had been completed and for the remaining towns, tax has another methodology that gives them a very close approximation to what the grand list would be. So they have, in theory, already dealt with this. It's just mind boggling to me that we need to ask our taxpayers for a 25% increase of their taxes. Because their property values have gone up that dramatically.
When does your property values go up? Doesn't mean you're, you're making enough money to afford.
Well, and so then he also did that research, and so this will lead into, he also did that research, and 66% of the homesteads in Heartland do not, they get credit on their tax bill. So 66% of our homeowners don't pay their full tax bill. Which just tells me that something's broken. So, that's where I am, right?
But, and, but when we, when we submit this budget, we're not actually asking, like, if the budget is S percentage above 10%, we're not actually telling taxpayers that what the tax bill is up this year. We're just ensuring that it's gonna have to go to the committee, right?
No.
You're, no.
You're under the 10%.
We're under the 10%. We're under the 10%. And under the 10%, our tax bill, like my personal tax bill will go up 23%.
I think Ed, Ed will do a nice job explaining it.
Okay, okay.
That's where we are right now.
I'm trying to cut around it.
Yeah, I'm confused.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I just thought that's, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so here we go.
Here we go.
So thinking about our strategic plan and, you know, the thing that we're all working towards is our portion of a graduate. So I just wanted to make sure that we started this presentation with that as really the focal point and making sure that we're doing everything that we can within fiscal reason to ensure our students have empathy, perseverance, integrity, communication ability.
Your very sweet playground.
And I'm a little sweet there. I wanted to, I brought this, I took this from a slide from a couple months ago, edited it just slightly. Just as Ed and I were working on this this morning, we got word that there were two more high school students just as of this morning. So that is updated as of this morning in that 148, it was 146 this morning, in that 148. Two move-ins, two move-ins.
So two move-ins this year.
Same family, same family. Yeah. And there were two move-ins probably about four to six weeks ago. Have another move-in coming in the next less than week. So I'm getting more, which is wonderful. So right now, run a total K through eight of 250 with 148 high school students. And the, the impact, although we're impacted goals, so an impact, over the last three fiscal years, we've used ESTR funds to support the paying of two full-time educators. And what that did was it lowered class sizes, helped support our curriculum rollout, and also really helped support and meet the needs of both students as well as the other teachers in the building. So students can get what they need on an individual level. And the asks that are built within the budget as it currently stands is the construction of a new playground. And I wanted to add a little background knowledge too, that currently our playground is over 25 years old. It is not accessible to 100% of our population, which I know we've talked at previous meetings, but I did want to make sure to highlight again here this evening. And that right now, sections of the playground are unusable due to unsafe conditions. And we've been told that there are no replacement parts because of how old the playground is. The other ask would be, second would be to add in the two FTE positions that have currently been ESTR funded for the last three years to keep the class sizes as they are now, and the continued investment to meet the needs of students. The third ask that is currently built within the budget is a 1.0 full-time instructional coach. We are the only building within the ESU that does not have one. The other buildings in the ESU do. It would help support our curriculum rollout. It would help teachers on an individual as well as smaller group and whole-scale level at looking at instructional practices. And it, I think I said this, but it would support, you know, teachers have a lot on their plates this year. They're rolling out two, especially our K5 teachers, willing to have two new curriculums, and that is a lot of a lift for them. An instructional coach would really help support them in that continued lift because it is not certainly just a one-year rollout with any sort of expectation that they have all of the knowledge and tools in their toolbox to be able to support their students. In total, so we broke this down as some of the sections. So the first one is wages and benefits. So it goes from the left, the FY23 budget, then actual for FY23, FY24 budget, and then FY25 budget. So if you look to the far right, or actually, I guess I could do FY24 was 26, 2, 2,651,334, which because of increases in adding FTEs, but as well as negotiated salary increases, would bring that up to 3,74,018. And benefits would increase 16.8%.
Talk about the difference between font sizes. I was looking at your benefits first, and I was like, holy macro, that's so much more.
Yeah.
Because it's a bigger font.
Yeah.
And then I looked down closer, and I was like, oh, wait.
Oh, it is, it's like, yeah.
Like, it just caught me off guard for a second. I was like, what are all these benefits? And I was like, oh, okay. Turned me off for a second.
Yeah. And next is contracted services. So FY24, we had budget 125,679, and the proposed budget that is built within there is 106,638.
And contracted services again are?
That is HCRS. We are, we are, but it's not built within this. So it's HCRS, I'm trying to think what else falls under contracted services.
Do you do any like OT, PT, things like that? Or is that under?
It's under the ESU.
That would be ESU, yeah.
It's probably just HCRS.
And how many people do they have in our building now?
We have two HCRS BIs.
Okay.
We have an HCRS clinician. And some of that, some of those are paid out of the ESU budget as well under special ed. For total maintenance and repair, that's just ongoing. You know, we have a door that needs fixing, something breaks, that we need ARC to come or something like that. Those are the protections that fall under maintenance and repair. So the, we budgeted this year 98,211. The budget proposed for this fiscal year '25 is 123,251. Transportation. This year we budgeted 24,000, for fiscal year '25, we budgeted 15,000.
Yeah, how does that go down so much?
We, Ed, I might look to you for this one.
That's, that's your field trips?
That's, it's field trips, it is.
The algebra, the algebra bus comes out of the ESU.
And the ESU.
So that might be why.
Oh, okay.
It's not, I'm trying to remember.
That might have been the case.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's like something got removed from it.
Yeah, okay.
Communication insurance, postage. We, this year had budget 37,977, and for next year, 42,430.
I have to say, I think it's funny that postage.
I know.
What is our postage bill like?
It's probably over 100, but dollars total. And books and supplies, this year we budgeted 122,550, and this for next year, we're proposing 108,750. And ESU assessments for this current fiscal year, 2,500,690, for next year, 2,775,157.
So 1% increase, those, you guys have those numbers?
Say that again for the ESU assessments.
Yeah, I'm just like, I'm just trying to get a 10%.
10%.
Yeah. I think Heartland's portion went down due to your decrease in enrollment and weather skills went up.
But it went up.
Yeah, you're, what, you're, it's, it's split up by.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, okay.
Yeah.
Not the absolute value.
Oh, how is that gonna work? Okay. Oh my God, I can't. Okay.
And the total proposed budget for FY24, where we currently are, 9,991,128. The proposed budget for FY25, 11,541,199, with a difference of 1,550,070, and a 15.51% total increase. And that does include the playground that is built within there, which is right about. Well, the, the idea that Ed and I have is to, in order to get under, Ed, if I'm, if I'm cutting into some of the things, you're gonna say, stop me, okay? To get under the 10% equalized people, we realized that we needed to cut right around $75,000 from the budget. So what we're proposing is a cut of $75,000, which will essentially come from that playground with the possibility of adding a, goodness, some, a word explaining.
Capital reserve.
Yeah, but a, a line, a warrant on the.
An article.
Thank you, or, yeah, yeah. An article on the voting ballot to potentially have up to 75,000 in being taken from capital reserve, but knowing that we're gonna want to re-escalate to fundraise as much as possible to keep that number as low as we possibly can.
And this is with all the surplus going into capital reserve?
Uh, no.
That leaves the budget to reduce.
Okay.
Let's do it. But the 15, so you're saying we're, that gets us to 10% per equalized pupil.
Less than 10%.
But it's a 15.51% increase overall for the budget.
Yeah, Ed will explain that next part.
Yep, to you.
Ed, do you want me to put some of that? Oh. Don't we have access to the?
What?
I didn't understand. That's just like available for use. But that's like clearly not true.
No, like with the boiler explodes tomorrow, we can't access those.
Right, he like specifically sort of used those.
Like a rainy day fund.
Yeah, so I sort of thought like, oh, I guess we should preserve it, but then it's like.
So it's only a one, one thing to your tank. Like you can, you can warn it.
Other than one to hear, but that would be a huge deal.
I mean, like our boiler does explode, that's the only money ever available then.
Yeah. In actuality, we could.
Okay, Ed, ready?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um, the top part, the, the first grid you see there, the 24 ed spending per equalized pupil. I put that in there for information because that's what we built the budget on. And that, by that, I mean, we took the 24 budget of 9,991,28, subtracted out the local revenue of 4,29,319, then you get your ed spending. And when you take, then you take your equalized pupils, because when we built the budget in '24, we were still using equalized pupils. So your equalized pupil count last for this year was 418.
Is there some background noise? I'm having a little trouble.
Yeah, it's the, it's the videographer.
No, I know.
It's from us, I think, Colleen.
But can we just mute us while it's talking?
Would that help?
Are we allowed to be muted?
I mean, if it can't be helped, it's.
I can see air handler in the art room, so.
Okay.
Can't make it any louder, right? Is that the loudest?
Way quieter.
It's louder, but I may might go back through if I do that much.
Okay. We're working on. Just one second. Or Ed, can you, can you speak a little bit louder?
Yeah, sure. Is there any way for the videographer to mute himself?
No, we, well, we can.
It's not that, it's the air handler in the back of the art room. Yeah, but his point is if we mute our microphones while he's talking, do you know, so that he could talk, but is that not possible?
I can do it, I don't know if I'm allowed to do it, because you guys.
Oh, because you're recording, right.
Because we're recording. Makes sense, okay.
Just screen it.
We're gonna try to get the air handler shut off. Can you do that?
He's going to try, he is not sure if it's possible, but he's gonna see.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Ed, just speak loud.
Okay, so again, back to the top, we're gonna take that 41861, and we're gonna divide it into the ed spending of 9.561. And that's where you come up with the ed spending per equalized pupil. So then along came back to 127, and they decided that they were gonna change the equalized pupil to a long-term weighted average. As you well know, we've talked about, it's gonna, puts different weighting factors on different types of students. And because they didn't have a number for '24, and they wanted to have a comparison for '24 and '25, they created what they thought would have been the long-term weighted average for FY24. And that's, that second graph, that second chart there, that shows you the number, 613.86. And they're taking that number and they're dividing it into the same ed spending that we had for '24, right? And then we're coming up with the 15,576, 53. And, and that's the number that you're gonna be, that we are comparing our FY25 ed spending to. As long as we keep the spending, ed spending, under 10% of that number, then we're, then you don't have to go through the process of review. So the next one down is just doing the same math, using the FY25 budget. Budget, local revenue, ed spending. The long-term weighted average in '25 is 660.71. You divide that number into ed spending, you come up with 17,11619, which, as you can see from the last chart, to 9.88%. So you are under the 10%. And as you outlined, what happened was initially, we had $250,000 in the budget for a playground. And what we did was we took, we reduced that amount by 75,000. So now you have $175,000 in there rather than 250. Making that cut got us under to 9.88%.
So this budget has all three positions that you want in there as well?
Correct. All right.
And how reliable are these long-term weighted averages? Like, will they stay?
The one that we're, the one that's in there now, 660.71, that's the frozen field, so meaning that that's the final one. But they did go through, the final frozen field represented the sixth iteration.
Okay, so it's.
The sixth frozen field?
Frozen the probable.
Six, five preliminary, and the sixth one is what they're calling the frozen one, so.
Is that for the whole state?
Yeah.
No, that's just Heartland.
We got redone six times, Heartland specifically?
No, not specifically Heartland. Just, when they come out, they come out as the whole state.
Okay.
So there are small changes.
And is the 24 long-term weighted average, that's real or fabricated?
That we got from the state.
Okay, and we don't think they'll change that. So we think that this increase is not gonna suddenly change and find out that we're 10.12%.
Right. We don't anticipate that. We're under the 10%.
So Ed, do you want me to go to the next slide?
Great.
Well, no, actually, the last, the last chart down there is important because this is what the crux of this whole thing is. And that is that if you stayed with under 10%, you were allowed to use the FY24 pre-CLA tax rate and then add 5%. So that chart shows you what the '24 pre-CLA tax rate was. And the '25 rate is with a 5% increase is 1.5531. Now that's the number you're gonna see on the next slide.
But that's the pre-CLA, because then the CLA is gonna be applied, and that's just gonna make that look like a drag.
Yeah.
Right.
But all of these, we don't have control of them.
No. No.
Just to be sure, clear.
No, although I did get an email, and you guys probably did too today, that like, they're strongly encouraging everybody not to get anywhere near the 10% because it's gonna impact the entire state.
If, 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 so there, there are some.
What does that mean?
There, there are some districts that are coming in well under the 10 and adding things to their budget. Because your tax rate doesn't change.
So you might as well get that new playground now and put that in your budget because if it stays under that 10%, yeah.
Yeah. Right. All right, Ed, ready?
Right, so what we're gonna show you first is what the budget would have looked out, looked like without that 5% pre-CLA increase. So we have a total budget. We have our local revenue. Then we have our low ed spending, okay? Then you have your long-term weighted average. Then you get your ed spending per long-term. So let's just do some of the math here. That 660 gets divided into the 11,308,835. And the ed spending per long-term is the same number that we did the comparison with in the prior slide. It's 117, or 17,11619, okay? Now, the property yield that that would have generated using, and we're using the property yield that they gave us on December 1st, okay? We're not using the one that, that just came out Friday. We're gonna show you, because all that would do was make the, the pre-tax rate CLA higher. So go ahead with the next one. So you can see that, that, what happens here is they take the 9,000 or the property yield, and they divide it into the ed spending per long-term weighted average. So 9,452 divided into the 17,116, comes out as 1.8663. Now that's the rate you would then use the CLA on, okay? So you add your CLA, which is 69%. They take the 69% and they divide that into the 1.8663, okay? And that gives you a number of $2.64 or $2.65. Now, that would have been the tax rate if you had gone over the 10%, okay? Now let's look at it with the 5% pre-CLA cap, okay? So we'll go through the ed spending, the local revenue, we've got, everything will stay the same, okay? Then you get down to the property yield, now you get the pre-tax. So we're not doing math anywhere, we're overriding the math. So we put in the 1.5531, okay? Then you apply the CLA, then you get your tax rate. You can see the difference. It goes from 2.65 to 2.25.
What's that?
What's that for a $100,000 property?
I've got that slide. Do you wanna go there?
I'm sorry, I think I'm, I'm like a little, there's a step here that I haven't been clear on yet. So this change from 1.5 to 1.8 is because of what?
Because you stayed underneath the 5%, uh, the 10% in that, you go back to the other slide.
Yep.
Go back, hold on.
No, I guess, okay, so we stayed under 10%, and that meant that.
So that's the right side. The left side is if that 10% rule wasn't there.
In place.
Got it.
So the 10% rule is up next, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, so by staying under 10%, we're only going up by 5%. So we take the actual tax rate and we don't.
It's the pre-CLA tax rate.
Yeah, that goes up by 5%.
Okay, and the CLA, just so I know for context, since this is the first year I've like looked at this, the CLA is done yearly.
Well, it, it, yes, you give the number yearly, it's the common level of appraisal, which your houses are.
And this has gone up significantly, like 69 relative to like what has been attached here.
78.
Yeah.
So it keeps going up.
Down, which makes things go up. So what that's saying is that our houses.
Are appraised at 69% of what they should be.
Right.
Got it, they're worth, if, if you were appraised at 100%, your tax rate would be a dollar, right, Ed?
Your, your CLA would be 100%.
If your CLA is 100%, what would that do to your tax rate, Ed?
If, if your CLA was 100%, they would divide 100% into the 1.5531, and your tax rate would be 1.5531.
Okay, and so, and maybe I need you to go back. Remind me where the 1.5531 came from?
Okay, I'll go back to the.
I'm sorry. Let me go back, hold on, Ed. Figure out how to. I'm sorry, I gotta click through it all, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
All right, so the very bottom, there's two charts. One is the comparison between the 24 ed spending and the 25 ed spending. So you can see the increase is 9.88%. Okay, so that means we're under 10. So then they go back to last year, and they, and we, we always have a pre-CLA number, which last year.
From last, from last year's budget. Okay, so it's the pre-CLA tax rate from FY24.
And we just then.
And then that, last year it was divided by .78.
Okay, but why did it go from 1.47 to 1.53, or 1.553?
That's the 5% increase.
Yep, got it. Okay.
That's the, you capped at that 5%.
Thank you. And 1.47 came from like years and years of evolving into our tax rate, whatever, that's what's your tax rate last year.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good questions. Very good questions, it's very complicated. Okay, so.
The 1.4791, if we were doing the 24 budget, you would see it in the same place. The budget generated that 1.4791 pre-CLA number. And they went back to that, like they went back to, uh, they generated an equalized pupil number, and they said, all right, if you stay under 10%, you're allowed to use a, that, that, that rate times 1.5, 1.05%. 1.05. And that's why I overwrote it in the other slide, because the math doesn't work.
Always good to hear.
Engineers love that.
So if you look at the first side with the budget before.
I know.
Budget before pre-tax CLA adjustment. I told you that the math there is that you take the 9,452 and you divide it into the 17,116. And that gives you the 1.8663. And the other side, that math won't, it, it would give you 1.8633 if we did it again, but because of the 10%. And the other side, that math won't, it, it would give you 1.8633 if we did it again, but because of the 10% rule, you get to use the 1.5531 and you could see what it does to the tax rate.
Got it. So, so added motivation to stay under 10. Yes, then, okay. But we have no control over the 60. So it's like, we are not proposing to the taxpayers, the 2.25. That is coming from the CLA on our town and there's nothing we can do about that. And what was the post-CLA tax rate last year in Heartland?
1.4791, oh, post.
It was 1.89.
1.89?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's going after 1.89.
Oh, I think it's on the next slide, hold on.
Oh.
Can you look?
So it's going after 36.
Tax rate, 19%.
Uh, let me figure this. So Ed, I'm on the next slide.
Right, so all this slide is showing you is the 1.4791 is the, is the rate that was adjusted up 5% in our example in our prior slide. And if you take a look at that, of your 43 cent increase, seven cents or seven and a half cents of it is due to just that increase in the pre-CLA number.
Okay.
Okay. Then you say, okay, we have the pre-CLA increase, which was .74, .074. And you can see what the CLA does to it.
Yeah.
It increases it by another 30, 36 cents to give you a total increase of 43 cents.
It's in the 70s.
Why are we in 70s? Where are we at?
Because our housing values have skyrocketed. But nobody else, no one else in the district has done that?
Not at the same level that we have.
Heartland's the lowest of all.
Heartland is like still one of the lowest.
Where the state was.
Okay, the next, uh, Ed, are you ready for the next slide?
Yes. This is just another example showing you, uh, what various, what pieces of the, um, tax rate are due to what, uh, so common level of appraisal is 70 cents. You know, the, the pre-CLA, uh, budget is 55 cents. And then a dollar is what we start at essentially. That's the state's. If we couldn't, if you could educate your children at $9,475, your tax rate would be a dollar.
Which, yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like enough.
So the next slide would be, and that's what you were asking for again.
Yeah.
So the five, the, the, the difference column is comparing the 25 tax to the 24 tax to see how much more it is at each value. For $250,000, you're going to see an increase of 1,335 bucks.
And here's the kicker, only 34% of Heartlanders pay that.
66 are, are income sensitivity?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Cool. So then it's like, okay. But where does that, the income sensitivity, like, but those taxes that aren't being paid, where do they, does the state have some sort of funding mechanism?
They just get spread out throughout everybody else again.
So am I paying for someone else's taxes?
Uh huh.
Well, not really, no. I mean, you're going to pay that rate and then that money gets put into the state and then comes back down by another. But it's not like you're going to pay more dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
But yes, you are going to pay more dollars because other people are not.
Eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look at the difference for like the $500,000. That's. Yep. Well, I mean, it's either we go with this or we just like chop out more stuff.
No, it doesn't matter. I don't think it has.
It doesn't matter if we chop out.
If you, you'd have to stop.
We have a little incentive.
Over here.
Yes. You have to chop.
But even then, it's going to still go up by 5% regardless of whether we increase the budget by 9.88% or 1.88%. That 5% increase, right, that is fixed.
Yeah, Ed.
I don't think we have any control of this.
They wanted to reduce their, the tax rate, how much would they have to cut out of the budget?
Around 880,000 bucks.
Yeah. And that would get them to what?
So we would have to cut.
That's like telling millennials to stop eating avocado toast to make him buy a home. It's like, no. It's like, that's not, that's not the issue.
Maybe my helping like. I mean, that's like.
It's like these are structural issues that are out of our control.
It would be devastating.
That's like a quarter of our teaching staff.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's, that's the point of us being out of the class.
I mean, the difference that we saw, so the one thing we have control over is making sure we don't go over 10%. Because if we go over 10%, we're going to go from 2.2 to 2.6.
Correct.
Which is going to be, there's going to be a.
Yes.
Whatever, eighth column there of added difference for going above the 5%. So I think that the key thing is going to be really like communicating that this is, this is the maximum cost saving we can provide to stay under 10%. Right, that this is the real challenge here is the CLA, which is entirely outside of the control of.
We don't, we have no.
I think we do, I think we need to tell somebody to fight the CLA.
Who can do that?
The town. I think we need to. But we can move ahead with our budget.
I mean, who here thinks that their houses have gone up by 31%?
You don't know.
It may have, but my in, my income didn't. I don't understand why income isn't factored in.
The houses probably have gone up, unfortunately, based on market values.
Yeah, but I.
But I mean, I know mine, mine hasn't gone up by that amount.
I, I think mine may have, but I, but I still say, Ed, I'm not making that much more money, so I don't really understand.
The market is, is artificial.
By 25,000, 30,000? That's not 31%.
Yeah, but that seems like a separate thing that we should maybe pursue, but not anything inside our scope, right?
Yeah.
You don't control it.
Right, for, in time for budget, we don't have time to, I think the fight should happen, but.
Yeah, I mean, but what, what I wonder is like how many houses in Heartland have actually sold? Like it's been very few. So they're calculating this on 10 houses out of the 1,000 that we have?
Is that how they do it, by home sales or do they do it by?
You're staying with the. It's by home sales and some nebulous formula that they apply.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, like houses have sold and they sell fast. It just.
Right, and in desperation and sight unseen and whatever the price was.
Right. Above, above asking in many places. Yeah. So it's not great news, but it is not much, there's not much that we can control.
Right, and we control it as much as possible, which is to stay under 10%. And we did. And fix the tax, the, the budget increase by 5%.
Yeah.
For the school and.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I mean, not now, um, I'd like to see how, and I think I've seen this before, but like, I need to present how this looks with the educational quality standards and the number, like the staffing number for kids. I think that last I looked, it was right.
Because this is the same staffing level we have this year.
Same staff level.
So. And we have more kids than last year.
So, yeah, so that hasn't changed. Okay. So within for February's regular board meeting, I've started the, the draft already, but I can make sure to include in there the, the language in, within EQS and how that relates to.
Yeah.
But even if we said, okay, we're not going to fund those three positions. It doesn't.
Takes us anywhere.
No.
It doesn't.
So like the same history.
It's just lowering our educational standards and really not taking our tax rate anywhere.
Right.
No, we have to cut that million or whatever.
800.
So there's no, there's no value to it and, and it's just decreasing our educational quality. Correct. So it's not, yeah.
Right, so it's either we cut 8, 800,000 plus dollars.
Which honestly I think would bring us out of compliance for like numbers and whatnot, like.
Or this is it. This is it.
Yeah. We got like right up.
They just canceled everybody's insurance.
Yeah.
You know what else I'd like to see?
Tell us, Nikki.
I want to know what our staffing levels were. If we can look at a chart of our staffing levels, because I don't think they've changed.
They haven't changed since COVID.
Yeah.
They changed in COVID, we had two, two positions, that's it.
But then did we?
But didn't we?
We lost one, we lost a title position, so.
Right.
They probably haven't changed very much.
That's what I'm thinking. Like, and so if we could show that our staffing levels over years have not changed.
Didn't we lose a teaching position as well?
We lost a teaching position last year.
We've had a teaching position. And that was just through attrition.
Yeah.
And that hasn't been brought back.
Yeah. Um, I think that that could be really helpful in defending.
Staffing levels over like a five or so year period?
Yeah.
Yeah, I might even go longer. I'd say pre-COVID. Okay, call you two years pre-COVID to.
We saw it for seven to 10 years. I'm sure Christine and I can get those numbers somehow.
Yeah, hopefully.
How much did our budget, sorry, how much did our budget increase last year?
Well, uh, it went up, it went from FY23 was 9,581,349. And the budget for FY24 was 9,991,128. So it was about 450,000. So, I, I mean, the bottom line has increased a significant amount.
What was?
Of that, I mean, some of that is your SRE funded teachers, some of that's the playground, some of that's the 16.8 healthcare increase, some of that's high school tuition, some of that is your SU assessment. And that's really all of it.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Colleen?
Well, I guess I was wondering what the percent is, but I could do it.
We can go back at last year's.
Oh, I'm looking at this slide, I'm like, why can't you see it? Is it hot? It's not a page.
Hurry to go.
How's that? Yeah, that's the shares. There it is.
So it's at 1.5.
1.5.
15 is the percent difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the state was predicting in January 12.
What was it last year? I don't know, Ed, do you have that in front of you?
Uh, yes. It is, hold on.
The difference?
The increase last year, percent increase.
FY23 was 9,580.
Yeah.
The dollar increase was 409,779. And the percent increase is, uh, 4.28.
But I feel like last year we were so, like, because we knew that the cliff was coming. So I feel like last year we were just like, no, we're keeping everything like pretty.
Well, on the kind of position.
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
So.
Cool. Just wanted to know. I think, I mean, our budget is what it is. I feel like that's true every year. We, we have some things that are out of our control, we do the best we can. We try to keep it as low as we can and still have, you know, children that can read at the end of 8th grade.
Don't forget to give them math too.
And are still alive.
Sometimes I have feelings. So the state was predicting that tax towns were going to go up 12%.
I thought it was 18.
Oh, was it 18?
Yeah.
I thought taxes were going to go up 18%, but that budgets were going to go up at 12. Okay, so 18% because of SRE. And we're replacing two SRE positions.
Oh, I see.
And one title position?
Yes. Are we going to get back title next year?
No. Your rates dropped, so you're the lowest in the district in the SU now.
What is wrong with us?
Our property values are too high.
I think they're pulling the data from a different place now, so it's probably more accurate. So it's not free and reduced forms, they're pulling it from.
Yeah.
The same name.
Yeah, so. And people are less likely to do it because it's not getting them.
Right, so they're pulling it from a different.
Yeah, they're doing most of the certification list.
The direct cert list. So Heartland is going to lose some title next year because other, um, districts within our SU have higher.
Or need.
Yeah.
I mean, that may, that may be appropriate, right? I mean, that may not be like artificial, that may be like real.
No, well, and the direct certification lists are like.
They're accurate.
Current.
Yeah, like they're accurate. It's like.
Right, right.
Students experience.
Right, right, right.
So like.
So that's documented elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well.
Let's just vote.
Need a motion. Yeah.
And the number, so.
And the motion that we're making is to propose the budget, not to pass the budget, right?
We, the voters.
We can't pass, yeah, the voters do that.
Yeah, we're approving it for voting.
Yeah.
Yeah, what is the official language though? Because we need to.
That's why I wanted to propose the budget, the motion to propose the budget to the town. I think it's approved.
Okay.
Approve the budget of 11,541,199.
Okay.
I will make that motion to approve the budget. 11,5, yeah, 541,199.
I can second that.
I say aye.
Okay.
Two.
So. So Hannah moved it, that seconded. Um, and. Okay, um, so yeah, we'll just go through all those in favor. I guess we'll do a roll call because Colleen moved. So, okay, we're going to do a roll call. Colleen?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Okay, so we have approved the budget. And we'll send it to the voters. I'll try to explain it.
I do, I do agree with you in that if there's some sort of fight that we can encourage the town to make around our CLA. I don't know.
Yeah, who takes up that fight on half time?
I just can't even believe.
I think many schools would stand beside us.
Does CLA affect anything else besides this?
I agree.
Like.
Heather, how did you get the baby?
Oh, it's not mine, it's Hannah's.
I made, I grew it.
I didn't know you were going to pass the baby around.
Golly, would have been here.
Do you want to talk to us?
Um.
Max?
Okay. Uh, so we also probably need to move that we're going to do a capital reserve.
Yep.
Uh, not to exceed 75,000. So I'll take a motion for that.
I motion to, I guess, use the capital reserve for no more than 75,000 toward our.
Okay, Colleen, so Beth moved, Colleen seconded. And we'll do, unless there's a further discussion, we'll do another roll call. Okay, Colleen?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Okay, uh, so we've approved, um.
Up to 75.
Up to 75,000 from the capital reserve. And I think that's it.[1661.62] Yep.
And we'll be having our informational meeting in a month? Right, we have our informational meeting in a month. I have to draft a letter in the next like 24 hours. To board. Uh, yeah, the, the board. Report. Annual report? Yeah, the board report. And the annual, the information meeting is Tuesday, February 27th at 7:00 PM at Damon Hall. And there will be a remote action for people to Google Meet it.
Yeah.
And with that, all those Google Meet people will be able to ask questions.
Yes.
They did last year.
They did last year.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, Ed.
Yeah, I just want to, in, in Heartland, in order to spend any money out of your capital reserve, you have to warn a separate article? And then the voters have to vote on it.
Yeah, that's why we.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if we have to, like, that's why we, so does the, did you hear what they said, Ed? Does the language have to be different?
Now, we have language that we've used in the past. It's just. You could say, it's just exactly what you said, but it just has to be voted on by the, it has to be voted on.
Right, separate article. Yeah, I was looking at the warning while we were talking so that I made sure we hit everything. Okay, so I'm going to draft a summary of our year. Would you like, Nikki, I can send you the one I've sent to Michelle Riley already, don't you send it to?